Okay.
Are we okay to start, or?
Okay.
I'll call the meeting order. It's 6:04.
6:04, alright.
During the current federal and state emergency declarations, the governor executive order to stay at home and the guidance limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting of the Montevideo School Board is being conducted in accordance with the Minnesota statutes 13.0D021 meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Due to the pandemic, it has been determined that it is not feasible for all board members to be physically present at the regular board meeting location. And this is not feasible for the public to attend at the regular meeting location. The Governor and Senator of Schools will be present at the regular meeting location. Persons may monitor the meeting from a location by going to the following links. And that's a YouTube link. It is all youtube.com. Channel UCIQQYM. MKGX. T L U R. H J E K G. HQ. View as subscriber. School Board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when not speaking. Not speaking, sorry. School Board members wishing to speak should raise their hand and be recognized by the chair. When recognized, the board member should unmute their microphone, speak, and then mute their device again. All votes will be conducted by roll call vote. Each school board member should wait until the name is called before voting. Persons monitoring the meeting from a remote location may submit comments through the following email address. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. Access to the recording will be made available to district members as soon as possible. Reasonably possible, so. Roll call vote. Travis.
Here.
Thank you, Travis. Allison.
Here.
Clover.
Here.
Snell.
Here.
Anne Stenson.
Present.
Principal Hickey.
Can you hear me?
I'll get to you, Mr. Eller. Dr. Eller, please. Principal. Yep.
Okay.
Principal Sprung.
Here.
Principal Gray. Is Gray gone tonight?
I don't see him, yeah.
Okay. Can you do the explanation of call, Dr. Eller, 1.3?
Yes. So, the call of the meeting is to have a special meeting to close out the current fiscal year and to take action on a number of items that either can't be delayed until August or that are needed to start the next fiscal year.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay.
1.4. Approval of agenda. Does anyone want to make a motion to make approval of agenda?
So moved, Chair.
Thank you. Does anybody want a second?
Second, Maggie Clover.
Thank you, Maggie. Any further discussion? And then we'll do a roll call vote. Andrew.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And Darren is also an aye, and it passed unanimously, so, thank you. Address the board. We didn't have any people, so. 1.6, Superministry Board.
Okay, just a quick update on a couple of items. When we were at the retreat, we did receive the general guidelines from the Department of Education. We are now working with each of the buildings to develop guidelines for the three possible ways in which we might be returning to school in the fall. And those three possibilities are coming back with everyone present in the building, coming back with everyone still in distance learning, or some type of a hybrid where it'd be a combination of some people present and some people doing distance learning, and then rotating everyone through. So we're working on that, and we should have further direction from the department at the end of July as to which of those will be used to start the school year. It is possible that the school year will start with some school districts being fully in session, while other school districts might be doing distance learning, and others may be on a hybrid, depending upon what the situation is within their community relative to the spread of the virus. And just a brief update on the administrative retreat. The week of June 12th through the 19th, we had both the administrative and board retreat. On the afternoon of the 17th, we had a joint session between the two groups with the Trust Edge Leadership Institute. And then, for both groups, it was a planning session and a time to look over things from the past year and look at how we're going to do things moving forward. And then finally, the bond referendum. This will be the topic for the July 20th work session. We did schedule a work session for 5:00 PM on the 20th. We'll discuss the possibilities for going back out on a bond referendum. Also, we'll be discussing at that time what the options are for changes in the agreements with ICS and wrap strategies. And I have had conversations with ICS, and we are getting information from them on that.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Eller? If not, we will be moving into 1.7, consent agenda item. Does anyone want to make a motion on the consent agenda item?
I move that we, oh, go ahead, Kelly.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Maggie Clover.
Thank you, Maggie. Thank you, Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Andrew.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye, sorry, aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And Darren is an aye also. So, consent agenda item did pass through. 1.74. Authorization of signatures for the Corps of Credit Union of Montevideo.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The consent agenda included.
Oh, sorry.
All items through 1.78.
I got it, thank you. 2.0, discussion items. Is there anything to be discussed? Okay, we'll go to action items. 3.1, set board stipends and meeting rates. This is pulled from the consent agenda item request and placed on the action item to allow the opportunity for further discussion prior to the action. The pay for attendance at board meetings, special meetings, other meetings, and committee meetings need to be set. Currently, the pay for attendance at school board meetings and other meetings and committee meetings is currently set at a regular meeting at $60. Other meetings, special meetings, and committee meetings at $30. Negotiation committee is $60. Sorry. Any discussion?
My assumption is that this was pulled off of the consent agenda at my, because I brought this up a few times, but, and I kind of was hoping we'd do a work session on this, but, as a professional board, we are not paid as a professional board should be. When you look at other boards like us who are making very important decisions for very important organizations, we're probably underpaid at our regular meetings by, you know, substantially. I would think that probably an appropriate rate would be 150 for a regular meeting and something less than that for others. In addition, many boards, you get a stipend for the time that you're not doing, or for the time that you are not going to meetings, but, just a monthly rate for reviewing emails, things like that, and being part of the board and an acknowledgement that there's things that you do outside of meetings. I think that, my reasoning for bringing this up is, it's, when we're looking for turnover in the board, and if you have someone who pays daycare or maybe has other things going on that they would be a good, well-qualified person for the board but can't financially afford to be on the board, I think that that limits. I know that my first few years on the board, I lost money being a board member, paying daycare, and I've done it happily. And when I first joined the board, I didn't even realize that there was going to be stipends. It's not about the money for me, but it is about recognizing one that we're professionals, we're, we should be the, we're the governing body of the agency, and yet we're paid as such that it's not recognized, and I don't think, I think it limits our ability to attract good candidates for board positions.
Any further discussion? Or anybody want to make any comments?
What are you proposing, Maggie? Because I mean, it's an action item.
Yeah, I was hoping that we would have the opportunity to discuss it and to sit down and look at it more in-depth. I'm on the service cooperative board, and so we get a $50 stipend per month just for being on the board. And then, our regular meetings are 150. And I think if we're gone for a full day, it's 150, and for a half-day, it's 100. For meetings less than four hours, it's 100. And then, if there's meetings that like are in conjunction with our regular board meeting, which we don't have, then it's like 10 bucks. It's nominal, what we receive for our, those type of meetings. But, I think that a monthly stipend of $50 for being on the board would be appropriate. And I do think that 150 for a regular meeting and being gone for a full day is appropriate for the position. And it's not about the money for me. It's about, I don't need, you know, I don't have a problem volunteering and giving back to the community. And I've looked at it that way for a long time, but it's not really what we're doing. We're running an organization. And, and that's, that's my issue with that. And I, and maybe 100 is, for, maybe 100 for a regular meeting is more appropriate. And 150 for a day being gone at convention. And I know, I know no matter what we get paid for that, we're all losing money going, if we go to a conference or convention or a workshop retreat, that's a full day. You know, at 150, we're all losing money doing that. But it is a recognition that, of the position that it is, you know, for a day, we're one of the lowest-paid, you know, people in the, in the organization right now. We are the lowest, you know, if we're gone for a day, so.
Well, thank you.
Could I, if I could just clarify for a moment. The reason that it was on the agenda was I had forgotten that it was on the regular consent agenda for the end-of-year meeting, when we were discussing this at the retreat.
Yeah, and I get that. I don't mean to imply that any ill thing from you, Luther, I just, and maybe it's something that we put a Band-Aid on this year and we come, circle back to for a work session later on. To, I don't, you know.
Yeah. I guess I, that's, that's what I was kind of asking you, is what do you want to do today? Because I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about a budget implication that we didn't really have a chance to calculate, nor should I have to sit and calculate it right here, right? So, from a timing standpoint, what do you want to do?
I don't, I guess I don't have, I don't, I don't care if we continue as we are right now or what we do right now. It just does, I think, need to be addressed. At some point, and, you know, and if it's not this year, it's next year, I'm fine with that. It's just something that we need to look at, and we need to start making sure that, you know, you know, just look at, I guess.
Anybody else have any comments?
Darren, I'll make, Darren, I'll make a motion that we leave the meeting rates as they are for this year, and we'll establish a work session to address future state salaries scheduled for the board.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it, Andrew, or Darren.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote again? Andrew.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Darren is an aye also, passed unanimously. Okay, thank you. 3.2, resolution approving long-term facility maintenance plan and budget. Dr. Eller.
Okay, and Adam is present and can speak to the long-term facility maintenance plan and budget.
Thank you, is Adam, or, thank you, Adam.
He might be muted.
I don't know who's.
No, Adam.
Oh.
Okay, now you should be able to hear me.
I can hear you, Adam.
And hopefully you can see my screen as well here. So, each year we have to go over and adopt our long-term facility maintenance plan and our 10-year plan that we have, has one of the requirements from the state. And, so our operating fund consists of operating capital and long-term facility maintenance revenue. And, we started the year with fund balances, as you can see here, of 98,000 in capital, about $178,000 in LTFM or long-term facilities maintenance. So, there's different projects, there are different expenses that we can use those funds for. And, so each year we update the needs and kind of what we're going to plan for going out 10 years to make sure that the big projects we have covered. As far as on the capital side, this year we did, we replaced our main tractor that we have for pulling the big mower, and then as well as blowing snow. And I believe that tractor was over 20 years old, but it lasted quite a while. There were some repairs over at the Fine Art Center that we needed to do with the boilers, just to be able to function. There's two boilers over there, and the one was down, and so we were running for a period of time on one. And if that one would have gone down, then we would have had to replace some stuff, but, got that fixed. The, the big item was the new reading curriculum district-wide that was over $100,000 paid in this year. Big capital project. Long-term facilities maintenance, our health and safety projects that we do throughout the year as far as coordination of the programs, tuck-pointing. We ended up not really doing a whole lot of tuck-pointing, but we always budget for that. We replaced some lockers over at the, in the locker rooms at the high school. We did over, it was actually closer to a $20,000 LED lights in our gyms. You've noticed that in both the middle school gym we did first, and then over at the high school gym. There's some really good rebates that Excel Energy had that made it feasible for us to replace those lights with the LED. It reduces the cost of replacing the ballast, and the life on those is a lot longer. Some interior surfaces, included an infant floor over at Sanford, and then the other flooring projects throughout the district. HVAC controls, we had about 5,000 in that. Some repairs to the football field irrigation, water heaters, and then EDA compliance and some bathrooms up at the high school. That totaled about 27,000. Roofing project at the high school, and then we did resurface the tennis courts, as well as did some patching in the parking lot at the bus garage and up at the middle school. So, with all the projects for this current year, you'll see where we ended the year. We grew our fund balance, or we projected to grow our fund balance in LTFM, hunted down a little bit in the operating capital with the curriculum, but overall, we have over half a million dollars in fund balance at the end of this year. So, when we're looking at next year, going into next year, we have a pretty extensive list because as part of the plan, we built up the reserves or the fund balance in long-term facilities maintenance to address some of these projects that we've been waiting on. So, you'll see here in long-term facilities maintenance projects, we have some doors at the middle school and at the high school that are in need of replacement, that are exterior doors that are, you know, rusting out or kind of posing some safety issues as far as not always securely locking or the ability to get in and out as easily as what we should. Window panels over at Ramsey, that's kind of an as-needs basis, but we put that on there just because it is a cost that could come up this year. Replacing the sound system at the high school gym has been talked about for quite a few years, and if anybody else has noticed, that the, the sound quality in there is very poor. And so, replacing that, as well as some screens, some mobile projection screens, would be about 58,000. Locker room lockers at the high school, continuing those projects is about another 23. A lot of those lockers over there are original or very old, so, well-needed. District repairs to electrical and interior surfaces. There's a big project for the middle school floor and some of the expansion joints in the tile that we keep replacing, looking at options to replace that with some more durable flooring. We need to do some updates at the high school, HVAC controls, showers in the boys' and girls' locker rooms at the high school. Ramsey roof project, middle school roof project, two of those. And then, doing some repairs at this ticket booth at the stadium. Gone by there, the roof needs to be redone and fixed up before it falls apart. Fencing at the stadium, as well as the Ramsey playground lot, repairing that, and then taking out the one at Sanford and just making that a grass area. Press box at softball field, that's part of the Title IX that we need to address, as well as some protective issues up at the baseball concession with some coverings for ball balls. And then on the capital side, for equipment, we're looking at buying, purchasing, replacing the big wing mower for the district that again is over 15 years old. Some custodial equipment that we have, and then the remaining balance of the curriculum purchases from this current year. So, you can see the ending fund balances for all those projects. We build our capital back up, and we spent down our long-term facilities maintenance capital. As far as the 10-year plan, as part of this, we have to approve looking out 10 years. And so, the state requires kind of a project, and you'll see on here the first, or the current year, next year, and then looking out about three years, so to the FY '23, it's a little more detail, and then the further out we get, it's just kind of the standard stuff that, that we know we're going to have expenses for, but we need to sort some expenses there. Big projects, of course, are always roofs, so there's those amounts listed in here for, for those projects. Ruffs and parking lots are the big, are the big cost for these. And that's all I have, Chair.
Okay. Any questions? Is anybody ready to make a motion to approve?
So moved, Chair.
Thank you. Is that you, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody want to make a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Oh, yeah. Andrew.
Aye.
Roll call vote, sorry. Kelly.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And Darren is also an aye, so it passes unanimously, Dr. Eller.
Okay.
Okay. Revised budget for 2019-20, and Spray will review the revisions to the budget.
Alright, thank you, and I'll share my screen here again. Okay, so you should be able to see my screen here. So each year when we, when we approved our budget last year at this time, and as we go throughout the year, all the changes that, that go on, and we have to do the revisions at the end of the year. So you'll see here where we started after the end of last fiscal year, and then where the approved budget from last year at this time. The revisions that happened throughout this year since then, settling the contracts from what we had initially budgeted was about a $40,000 increase. Each year we have a placeholder for insurance benefits, and then at the end of the year, we have adjustments that we make for those. we have adjustments that we make for those employees that opt out, that we don't see Other changes you'll see there, special ed floating, money was down mostly because that cost, it's about $180,000 there. the program costs paid directly through there were up, that reduces our revenue. ALC tuition adjustments, as part of the COVID restrictions this spring, the ALCs mainly Increase in the general special ed funding always increases throughout the year, and that was up over $100,000 throughout this year. their independent study programs were affected quite a bit, and therefore it reduces their There's some additional Safe Schools money, as well as the Bush Foundation grant that we received was considerably higher than what we had budgeted for. revenue for theirs, which reduces our revenue and our expenses because the money flows And then we did put in over $100,000 for the CARES funds money that will be coming through, we're the fiscal host for that. So it is about a $200,000 swing, and so we have to reflect that. that we can set aside to offset some of the costs that we had related to COVID. We were down a little bit on ADM adjustments and then as well as the COVID stuff affected Levy adjustments that were made with the levy, immigration, and then the other miscellaneous a little bit at the end of the year as far as some PSCO and some other stuff, but adjustments adjustments. Ending the year proposed about 7.5% fund balance. to that was down about $176,000. Other formula adjustments as a result of some of those was down another $256,000. We're still sitting in a good financial situation as far as cash flow with MIR Ed's as the fiscal host, as well as our fund balances, and this is just on the general fund.
Any questions?
And then.
Oh, sorry, Adam.
Yep, and I'm just going to touch on this other page here. That was the general fund adjustments. Again, we're ending there at 7.5% projected. Our other funds, food service, community service, food service is about same. We had some reduced costs due to COVID, and the reimbursement rates on the meals that we had was, were pretty good since we served quite a few meals throughout the process. So our food service fund is, has a large fund balance, and we have to have a plan, or we did have a plan to spend that down, but due to the COVID, they allowed us to waive that for another two years, so we're fine there. ECF, or community service, as you know, as we were required to offer the daycare, we are going to be seeing some losses in Fund IV, community service, which will require us to do some fund transfers between some of the reserve funds for ECFD and school readiness into the general community ed to offset those, which we'll probably be taking action or proposing in September, I'm assuming, as we get further down the road as far as year-end stuff. Overall, we're ending all of our operating funds at 8.58%. Then you'll see down here the long-term facilities maintenance cap, operating capital that we reviewed in the 10-year plan, as well as debt service and our student activities accounts. Those are all of our operating funds for this year. And that's all I have on that.
Thank you, Adam. Does anybody have any questions? Kate, anyone want to make a motion to accept the report?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Andrew.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And Darren is an aye, and it passes unanimously. Dr. Heller.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we on 3.4, is that right?
Yes, the proposed budget for 2021.
All right. So when we're looking at this next year, upcoming year, share the screen again here. Year-over-year increases that we see is our biggest cost every year, and especially as of late with the staff we have, just our personnel, general costs of both settled contracts and then people just moving both down and across on the salary schedules, District Y, when you look at the dollar amount there of $650,000, you have to kind of take into account that we have on average about 250 to 300 employees every month. So when you look at that, break it down by employee costs, it makes a little more sense, but.
Adam, can you zoom in a little bit?
Yep. There we go. Is that better?
Thank you.
ALC, again, total cost about $650,000. The intents that we have for lane changes are pretty low this year, about 34. And then we're looking at some of the unsettled groups, which we have our big group of teachers, licensed staff is settled and set for next year, but when we're negotiating for the other bargaining groups and then the non-bargaining groups, the expected increases on that, we have to put some additional costs in there for settlements, about 75. Changing the art position that's at the middle school and I believe sometime at the high school to a full-time position, she is, that position is pretty close to full-time, so there's not a huge cost there. There is money in the budget for an additional CTE position, or if that doesn't fill, looking at possibly having that as a placeholder for another elementary position. Property liability insurance increases, as last month at the meeting, we approved and talked about the increases there. Since then, we've seen, heard from other districts that haven't had any claims within the last five to 10 years, that they were also seeing upwards of 25% increases on their premiums, so it wasn't all unique to us. I'm just kind of looking at an industry-wide trend as far as property liability for schools trending up. Increased costs on transportation contract is about $18,000, and then putting back in, back to what we consider normal tuition revenue for ALC tuition, and then the expense that comes along with that for the flow-through, moving that back up. General ed formula increases, special ed funding increases, and then other miscellaneous adjustments. One other comment as far as enrollment-wise, we graduated our smallest class this year, and then one of our second smallest classes is our junior class, which will be our seniors next year. And then our kindergarten class coming in this year is expected right now to be one of our bigger classes, so and looking out for the next two years are expected to grow as well, so we're graduating our smaller classes, bringing in bigger classes, and so that's a good problem to have, but comes along with some added costs there as well. We're projected to end the year at 7.19% on the general fund balance. Any questions on that?
Nope, I do not. Does anybody else?
Okay. So when we look at here, all of our other funds, all the other operating funds, again, food service, community ed, no real big changes as far as what's expected, it's kind of up in the air to know what to expect for next year. You know, what is food service going to look like? What is community ed going to look like? So there's a lot of variables in there of what might happen, but as of right now, we're, like I said, we have a good fund balance in food service, and then we're going to be having to make some adjustments in community ed to offset those costs. We've been fortunate to receive over $50,000 in grants for daycare programs, but it doesn't totally offset all of our losses as a result of this. And then also not really knowing in the general fund, we built money in there as far as for additional costs due to COVID, and there's, you know, there's CARES money out there that can be used to offset that, so it's kind of, it's a wash, but we still don't know what the year's going to look like, are we going to need more connectivity issues, more Chromebooks? What are the additional costs going to be are really unknown.
Adam, did you, did you have a line that was going to, are you going to be able to track those COVID costs?
Yeah, and we have been already since it started, and just our, so during the whole end of the year, when we went into distance learning, we had, you know, we had to pay all of our hourly employees, and not all of them worked a full day.
Right.
But we tracked all those hours and all the costs that were associated with it, or that lost time is what we call, so we were paying people for work that they actually weren't doing. And it ended up being about, with benefits fringe on there, just under $200,000. And then as far as supplies and other projects that we've been tracking as far as specific to COVID, was about another 20. So we're looking already at this current year of about $220,000 in both additional costs and lost costs as far as lost time to it.
In expenses.
Correct.
Adam, okay.
Correct.
Does anybody have a motion in their future?
So moved Chair.
Thank you. That's the budget for 2021 Adam proposed to us. Does anybody want to make a second?
I'll second up Travis.
Thank you, Travis. Kelly.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And Darren is an aye, and it passes unanimously again, Dr. Heller.
Thank you.
And then as far as supplies and other projects that we've been tracking as far as specific to COVID, was about another 20. So we're looking already at this current year of about $220,000 in both additional costs and lost costs as far as lost time to it. In expenses.
Correct.
Adam, okay.
Correct.
Does anybody have a motion in their future?
So moved Chair.
Thank you. That's the budget for 2021 Adam proposed to us. Does anybody want to make a second?
I'll second up Travis.
Thank you, Travis. Kelly.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And Darren is an aye, and it passes unanimously again, Dr. Heller.
Thank you.
I gotta find my sheet, sorry. 3.5.
Yes.
Approve annual policies. FMLA policy, harassment and violence, mandated reporting, mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults, student discipline, bullying and prohibition, student sex non-discrimination, internet acceptable use policy, email, Chromebook policy, acceptable use policy grades four through 12, and employees, acceptable use policy for elementary, school district system accountability, and crisis management. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve those policies?
So moved, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then we'll have a roll call vote again. Andrew.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Travis. Travis.
Aye.
Thank you, Travis. Maggie.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And Darren is an aye, so. What do we have left, sorry?
Executive session for the discussion of negotiations.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion, move.
Go ahead, Travis.
Thank you, Travis. Does anybody want a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kelly. Um, we had a roll call vote, I suppose, I suppose you know. Sorry. Andrew.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Thank you, Joe, and Darren is an aye, so we'll go into.